Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, April 24, 2024 Douglas Planning Board Meeting to Order. Time is 7:00. First item on the agenda, we'll go around the table for attendance. Jacob Schultzberg here.
Mike Schlesman here.
Aaron Sokrat here.
Mike DeRose here.
Rich Preston here.
Mike Greco here.
Mike Swicker here.
And Ernie Marks excused.
Benoit, Director of Community Development, also here.
Okay.
A and R is 29 Cross Street. Steve Beck, possible votes. If you can just say your name and address, sir.
Free Lack of Ambulance.
Okay, if you can just give us a rundown of what we're looking at.
We brought in two lots on Cross Street last, I think last winter or last fall, and this was the next one to it, the last one.
Jamaican Lot 3?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a conforming lot.
Okay. Mr. Benoit?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have any issues with the plan as designed. Thought it was very well done. This is Lot 3. I also provided the board with the concept plan that shows 15 potential lots out of this project, which could be coming down in the future. Just want the board to be aware of that because stormwater requirements regarding that. So just want us to be aware that it could be further developed in the future.
Okay.
And Tim is aware of this as well.
Okay. So that's involving three streets. Grove Street, Mumford, Cross Street, potentially down the road.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Actually, in two weeks, we'll be here with Lot 12 and 13 at the intersection of Mumford Road and River Street.
Okay.
Grove?
Grove.
Through the chair, are all the lots conforming? Are they all A and Rs?
Yes.
Okay.
There are probably two or retreat lots.
Mm-hmm.
Those will be the last ones.
Okay. All right.
The board will need a retreat.
Board, any other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the A and R plans for 29 Cross Street, Lot 3.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will sign it after the meeting. It'll be developed before we pick up.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
The audience, please.
All right, next up is A and R for 21, 211 and 213 U Street, 36 Locust Street LLC, and Patricia L. Fazella. Possible votes, and Mr. Sokrat has recused himself from the table.
I'd like to present it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, what we have here is a transfer of land. This is actually getting rid of almost a possible access point from U Street for the parcel A in the back. He's transferring parcel B to 215 U Street, and that will be combined into one lot. This is a pretty simple transfer of property. It's just done as an A and R because it was frontage on the road, but the application was signed by both parties, and both parties are aware of the transfer.
Okay.
If I may, we're also trying to clean up-
If you can just approach the table.
Oh, Aaron Sokrat.
I guess.
Aaron Sokrat, 36 Locust Street LLC. We're also cleaning up, per advice of Matt, we have three tax bills. Now we'll go down to one tax bill. So there's a piece of land that is, it's all attached to the farm over at 36 Locust Street, and we're just eliminating a line between us. You can see that. That's part, and there's, it's not landlocked. It's, we have like 1,200 feet on whatever it is on Locust Street, so it becomes one contiguous 18 acres, no, 28 acres or so.
Mm-hmm.
Most of that's in woods, like about 18 of the 20 that, that's it. So just trying to clean.
Thank you.
So through the chair, so this Lot A will not be landlocked?
Correct. It's under common ownership with Lot 1R and Parcel 1.
Okay.
This would eliminate that lot line in between them as well.
Okay.
Okay. Is that what the Z?
Yes.
This way gets in the line?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, board, any other questions or comments? Nope. Seeing as none, I will entertain a motion to endorse the A and R for 211 and 213 U Street, 36 U Street LLC, and Patricia Fazella.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Preston, seconded by Ms. Schlesman. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay. Unanimous, all set.
Coming back.
Yeah, Mr. Sokrat is back at the table. All right, next up, 7:00 PM public hearing continued. Davis Steve Realty, application for site plan review, SPR-240305 Industrial Building, 140 Davis Street. Possible votes.
Good evening. My name is Mark Allen. Allen Engineering Associates. Can everybody hear me in the room?
Yes, we can hear you, Mark. How are you doing?
Fantastic. Thank you so much. If I can, just representing Ed O'Leary for the O'Leary Welding building at 140 Davis Street. Want to bring you up to speed. We have had some good communication between the design team, the O'Learys, and we also got a letter in from Graves Engineering dated April 9th. So we've been working through a couple of changes. I apologize for not getting a full set of revised plans out for you tonight, but I just want to talk through two or three of the main topics of the application, if I could.
That's fine.
Matt, is it possible to share my screen?
Sure. Sir, could you give them screen sharing abilities, please?
Should be all set.
Should be all set, Mark.
Yep. Okay. Can everybody see that screen?
Yes.
Right. So again, there's probably two or three big-ticket items I don't want to go through tonight. The first of which being, we were asked to evaluate or determine whether or not an earth removal permit was also necessary for this particular project. And we did read through the Graves Engineering Review Letter. Now, it was very thorough and very well-written as far as definitions and whatnot, but what I think, I think Jeff at Graves didn't understand was that, not only through this comment, but other comments, that O'Leary Welding actually owns 124 Davis Street as well. And the reason why we've designed 140 Davis Street is in direct relation to five key topographical points. And those five key topographical points are the building itself at 124 Davis Street, our new entrance at 140 Davis Street, the vehicular access to the rear that's going to connect the two parking lots, and the existing grade along the easement for the gas line. And keeping in mind, the fifth component is the elevation of the no disturb zone. So all of those items taken into, as a whole, as a design factor, we also know that the building will be used for drop-off of vehicles inside the building, coming out to the building, and these larger trucks have to sort of, you know, tee up at Davis Street and then look both ways in each direction. So we kept a 5% slope up from Davis Street, set the top of concrete, and then graded back to the edge of the, or the rear of the lot at the gas easement. So we feel as if this is actually 100% part and parcel to the site development of this building. We, and Ed O'Leary takes no joy in having to remove material, as it is very bony. He is not using this as a lucrative deal to sell gravel, but it absolutely, we feel as if is in harmony with the fact that this earth removal is in harmony with citing this new building that has to have circulation with the existing facility. So in addition to that, that's one of the items that Graves had mentioned. One of the other larger items is the drainage system. One of the things that was talked about was the old gabion basket drainage basin, of which was in this location here. We've since removed that, just to keep that out of sort of discussion, and we've created or designed a freestanding drainage basin, very typical side slopes in this area here. So we just want to kind of make, want to make the commission, the commission, the planning board aware of that, because it'll come up a lot in the peer review. One of the other items that we also entertained was changing the one-to-one slope in the rear of the property, and Ed has agreed to do a tiered retaining wall system, so as to not remove as much material between the gas line and our parking lot. So we're going to come back to you with revised earth removal numbers, because he's willing to take on the expense of doing some boulder walls in order to minimize the amount of material he needs to take out. We were also able to tighten up the overall footprint of the parking area. So this, this parking area here has all changed by about eight feet closer to the building. So all of these items, I think, are going to be very positive in the final design plan that comes before you and Graves, but just wanted to get, you know, your feeling on these changes moving forward.
Mark, did you lose parking spaces with the parking lot adjustment?
We did not.
Okay. All right, Mr. Benoit, talk about the earth removal part first.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know Jeff's not on the call to kind of, kind of defend his stance, but-
Okay.
I mean, summary of his opinion, the extent of earth excavation, both depth of excavation and volume excavated material from existing elevations, established opposed elevations depicted on the site plans are not incidental to building construction or parking lot construction, not customary for a project of this size, therefore, earth removal permit is required. I'm curious as to the adjustments that Mr. Allen has made might change his opinion on that matter.
Okay.
So I'd like for him to be able to read this and then make, and then give a follow-up statement.
Okay. Has he heard Mark's kind of response? Did Mark respond to it?
I have not. No, I wanted to sort of run it by the board, but yeah, we'll issue Jeff a full response letter outlining all these five design criteria points, and we'll await his response.
Okay. And the second item, the drainage, and comment, it's tough.
So you got rid of the gabion basket design and putting in a standard basin. I want to make sure that these plans get to the Conservation Commission for their review also, because I think they're reviewing existing design with the gabion basket.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're in a bit, a little bit of a holding pattern with a peer review at the Conservation.
Right.
I think we need to select a review agent, but yeah, absolutely, they should get the most updated plan set.
Right. And probably the same thing with the third item as well.
Right.
Okay.
I did just get four.
Mr. O'Leary, you have anything to add? You don't have to, I'm just, if you have anything else.
Oh, well-
Okay.
Well, a little bit.
Yeah.
140 Davis Street.
If you can just come up so the mics can pick you up.
Sure. I just want to comment on the Graves report.
Okay.
The way I read it, basically defines incidental, and all the, I don't have my glasses on, I'm not going to worry with that, but, you know, writes a paragraph about being incidental and defines it, and Merriam Dictionary and all that stuff, and then at the bottom, for some reason, kind of suggests that we do need a gravel removal permit. And I just wondered, which I kind of disagree, I agree with this whole paragraph except for the last part, because it is all incidental-
Yeah.
-to the bone. And as Mark said, you know, if you, if you look at the topographical drawings or drive by the lot, you know, it slopes all the way up to the gas line. You can't build anything on it until you take the gravel and make it flat.
Yeah.
So that's for the building. It's not, like Mark said, to sell gravel or just for something to do in my spare time. It's something that needs to be done for the building.
Okay.
That's it.
Take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the, Matt? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience for 140 Davis Street? Anyone online for 140 Davis Street? All right, board, any questions or comments, or?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Has the side setback been addressed? I don't know if I missed that enough. Graves is saying it's actually 16 feet, and it's listed something different.
Right, and the side setback is, is a common lot line for the property owner, I believe. So that being the 16.
Yeah, but even, even as such, we do meet that side yard setback by more than a foot. It was just, the comment was in regard to, I think, the rear and the front just being misnumbered. We'll tidy that up in the revised plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, do you have a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If we're talking about whether or not we need a excavation removal permit, we should probably get an estimate of how much material that is, because it's a lot different if it's a couple hundred yards versus 20,000. It doesn't look like it's going to be 20,000.
Yeah, we could absolutely give you that updated volume, now that we have the tiered retaining walls along the gas easement.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like you have some more information for potentially next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Need a motion to continue to May 8?
Confirm. May 8, yes.
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing for Davis Street Realty to May 8 at 7.
Motion made by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Sokrat to continue to May 8. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
You.
All right, and we have additional business, master plan.
So I added a possible votes to this, because I believe that the planning board as, now, the master plan is a subcommittee of the planning board, and I believe you need to appoint the members of the master plan committee. And I have a list of members here, and I can read them out, and if anything, we take a blank motion to appoint them all, if that works. Select Board, Max Postma. Planning Board of Fields, John Bombara. Conservation Commission, Katie Graves Dudley. Planning Board, Rich Preston, Meg Schlesman, Mike Swicker. Economic Development, Bob Manerick. Finance Committee, Carol Gogolinski. Open Space Committee, Gordon Larabee. Building Facilities Construction Committee, Linda Brown. And Residential Volunteer, Brandon Moore. Looking for a motion to appoint those members to the master.
Will you appoint ourselves when we're on that committee? How does that work?
Yes.
Or do we accuse ourselves?
No, you can.
Is it a motion?
Yeah, for a motion to appoint.
I'll make the motion to appoint those.
I'll second it.
Chairman can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint as listed by Mr. Benoit.
And I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Sokrat, seconded by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All set.
We might have some additional residential volunteers to come in, and at that time, we'll just invite them as they come.
Okay.
The master plan committee met, second meeting, last meeting, we updated our SWOT analysis and went over the contract for CMR PC. What they're going to do now, assuming we get funding approved at town meeting, we're going to apply for the entirety of the master plan for both grants, both the community compact grant and the economic home grant, federal. So this way, if we get one, we back off the other. If we don't get the first one, we have a chance to. Before, we were doing it in two halves, and if we got one half, that wouldn't make sense. So they're going to apply for the entirety. That's all the update I have. Unless, Mr. Preston, you have one?
No, I think our next meeting, it's the third Wednesday now, so that'd be the 15th.
And by then, will CMR PC be involved, hopefully, as long as it's passed?
Great.
Yep.
And there is a schedule or yearly calendar for the all the meetings?
Yep.
Close to it.
Awesome.
Yep.
All right, I have a couple accessory apartment extensions. First is 67 Northwest Main Street. Possible votes? I assume they're all standard, no changes?
Right.
Okay. 600s, all right.
It's a three-year thing?
Yes.
Yep. Same tenants, same square footage.
All right. Board, any questions or comments? All right, entertain a motion to endorse the accessory apartment for 67 Northwest Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Unanimous, all set. And 199 Walnut Street.
So moved.
It's confirmed? No, all right.
Not same, same tenants, same square footage.
All right, so motion made by Mr. Swicker, seconded by Ms. Schlesman for 199 Walnut Street.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Unanimous, all set. All right, notice of intent for 34 Hemlock Street. Mr. Benoit, talk to us.
This is a little bizarre. What this is, is this is an intent to sell some 61 property land, so the town gets first right of refusal. But in this case, this one is a foreclosure. This one is the bank trying to foreclose. So, or the lender trying to foreclose. So it's a little odd in that regard, but the town, our new policy involves, and it's the Select Board that makes its decision, but our new policy collects comments from all of our boards and committees to see if there's interest in the parcel. So if you want, I can pull it up on the screen, but there is also a printout in the back of this that kind of shows the parcel. It is large farm. I think that if anyone wanted to develop this, this would have to be a subdivision plan that would install a roadway, or it'd be a retreat lot for one lot if anyone wanted to keep it as is. I'm not sure what the bank intends to do with it, but.
It's, it's like two and a half.
No.
It's many.
It's like.
Through the chair, the yellow outline that sides of the lot?
That's a lot.
Yeah, it looks like it's like 15, 20 acres, but what-
Is it known how many?
In the narrative.
Yep.
Where's that?
It is. It's in here. 52.256 acres plus 1.789.
Oh, acres, okay, yeah, 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 54 acres. Yeah, that's a good question.
And are they looking for, are, like, the planning board's view for planning board-wise, or just?
The planning board has any interest in asking the town to acquire the parcel.
If I may, through the chair, is it strategic in any way? Substantial lands, walking paths, unusual features? I mean, this is part of what we're going to entertain. Go ahead.
I'll pull up the-
I'm curious as to if there's any town-only in a button. I don't believe so.
I don't think there is.
Right. There's no water features.
Hasn't existing house on it already. Doesn't existing house on it already.
Yeah.
It's an old farm, for sure.
Do we know if that property is occupied?
No, it was empty for a while, and I think someone went into it, and I don't know if they officially ever finished or anything like that, but I think it's been on the fence for a while.
Kind of looks like.
So no matter what happens, pretty much it always has to stay a one-acre lot, I mean, a one-house lot. Or does that access wide enough for somebody to develop it?
Do you know the frontage, Matt, off the top of your head?
What's the frontage?
100 feet.
Shows this as a private-
It'd be a retreat.
But I don't think that really says.
Someone will buy it. I'm selling.
So being 100 feet wide, that'd be wide enough for an easement for a roadway.
Right.
So a roadway could go under there, develop the backside. You'd be looking at, if you had two acre lots, at least 20 houses.
Depends if there's any wetlands or-
Or you can see the wetlands off to the side. They kept this lot.
Yeah, Tinker Bell Brook goes along the edge of it.
Yeah, way, way.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Is that the house there in the center?
Yep.
Mr. Benoit, if I can ask, what is beyond the lawns around the house that looks like it's, ah.
Mm-hmm.
Someone else is wrong.
Yeah, I'm sure maybe open spaces would be interested. It's just as tough as it's not linked up with any other spot.
Right.
Save, save our money.
Yeah.
Can we take a, sort of a heartbeat of the board?
We might just look and, just see if the town owns land around it at all first.
Looks like there's a big parcel south of it.
It's under common ownership of this property at all.
What's it assessed, what's it assessed at?
I don't know anything on it, but it's-
Yeah. All right. Board, anyone interested in making a motion for, or what's the wording of votes that they're looking for?
It's supposed to be a motion to, a motion to not support exercising the first right of refusal on 34 Hemlock.
I'd like to make that motion to not support.
Exercising first-
Exercising first right of refusal on this lot.
Motion made by Mr. Sokrat, seconded by Mr. Swicker. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing as none. All right, you'll draft a letter?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, ongoing development. We'll start with the cubes at Galboa and McIntyre Loom for special permit 220215.
Good evening. How is everyone? This is Mitch Rousch with Clayco.
Hey, Mitch, how are you?
Doing all right, sir. How are you?
Doing well. If you can just give us a rundown of what's happened since we last spoke, perhaps?
A quick rundown is, the site is about 95% sprayed with grass. They were, are with hydroseed. They should start adding some additional surface, straw blanketing to protect the slopes a little more. Let's see. I've been in contact with Ken Fraser over the past week to, number one, hear that he's doing much better. But number two, just to go over some things that he's going to want to see, I have prepared for his final inspections. We've run the fire pump test. It has passed. We've run the fire alarm test, or preliminary test on that. It has passed, although we haven't checked the radio signal until we do the final. Let's see. And then the last option is, I know that there is a plan for- And then the last option is, I know that there is a plan for some work up on, at the McIntyre Loom property. There's a simple move that needs to be completed by National Grid, and Mr. McIntyre will sign off on that plan, and we should be able to move forward with putting the trees and the berm up there on, along Main Street, Hartford Avenue.
Mr. Benoit?
Sure. So, yeah, that was something that was discussed at the last meeting. Eric kind of introduced it with Todd Morrie, and talked about the berm and the trees. And I guess we were just kind of looking for a schedule as to when we could expect that to be done.
Unfortunately, I can't give you a schedule. I don't, I can't control with National Grid. I'll make the proposed move that Bo would like. But I do know that as soon as they do that, he is, he's reviewed the drawings, and he would be, he's willing to sign off on them so that we can go forward.
Do you have the trees ordered and readily available, so once the work's ready, they're ready to go?
I've spoken with my landscaper, he has the trees tagged, and so they are ready when that time is ready to go.
How about the issue through the chair, with the nail wall that was filled, and has that been, has that been resolved?
That has been reviewed by three separate engineers. The design engineer is preparing a response to Fairbanks Engineering. Part of a discussion I had this morning is, they do recognize there's a couple of items they do need to address. They are not structural, but there are some items that they do need to address on the wall, and then they will respond accordingly to Mr. Fairbanks, or Fairbanks Engineering's email or report. And then primarily, we'll have a full meeting at that point to decide what direction we're gonna go with the repairs.
Great. Okay, just please keep us informed about that, appreciate it.
Yep.
And Mitch, I watched the conservation meeting from Monday. Did you remove that pipe like you said you would?
Got it done today.
Awesome.
It was just, it was just a cutoff of gas line that they just left laying in the rock.
All right, thank you. I know that was a, an item that was discussed at that meeting, just making sure you came through with it.
Yes.
Conservation's got a tight grip on this.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We have peer review for anything, or anyone on to confirm or discuss it?
I don't think you're close on this.
Okay. Board, any questions or comments?
Getting towards the end.
Yep.
You have any? All right. Yeah, keep, keep moving forward and, oh.
Thank you. Quick question.
Yes.
Richard, nine of twenty-one, like Rose Street, I'm script.
Just come a little closer, Richard.
Just mentioned, there's some plans. I was wondering if those were available to, to look at, to see what they're gonna be doing for the berm, the shielding. Long, what's Hartford Avenue?
Mitch, do we have access to those preliminary plans for the berm and the, and the trees?
I have not seen them.
Okay.
So to the best of my knowledge, until they're fully approved, I won't get them.
Okay.
I do know the quantity of trees is sixteen along the roadway and eight on the berm, so that's why I've been able to at least get those tagged.
Okay. And when we get them, we'll make them available.
Okay, is that, so is there like, is it approval for whatever the final design looks like on that? Does that go through you guys, or is it?
So they're working on the final plan and final design of it, and?
Yeah, it'll come to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ned, are you, do you, I'm just trying to think how, to make sure you are aware of the plans. I don't know if maybe Mr. Benoit can talk to Mr. Manerik to get in touch with you when they're avail, when they're in, or when it's gonna come to us?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
We'd be able to?
Yep.
Reach out, all right, yeah. Make sure you're aware that it's coming to us and it's there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone aboard, have questions? All right.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thank you, Mitch.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
So did I see something in here for Legacy Circle?
Oh, is there something? I don't see anything.
No, at our last meeting, they were authorized to put some arbor buddies on the site.
Yep.
Through the chair, could I ask a question relative to the arbor buddies, which, you know, I was in favor of, and we remember we worked with them on sort of staggering, and they could expand them out because they were too tight. How is it that, and maybe I missed something, that I was out there, and remember I said, you know, much of that, you know, trees were taken down. To the left, to the left side, as you face it, there are no trees. The rest of them got taken down to the left. What happened to that?
The ones in the, in the little, I call it a swale?
Yeah, near the swale. I know they said, oh, they're gonna die, and they, they even looked like they were gonna die to me. All of a sudden, those are gone now. What, what happened?
Yeah, they said they were gonna inspect those and remove the dead ones and then plant the...
So they're all dead?
They were, most of them were. Yeah.
Okay, so they're gonna put those back?
They're gonna put it...
Or we only allow, or we, depending on the arbor buddies, and that's the end of it?
That's it.
Oh, my God.
And what other natural growth occurs, probably?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a roadside swale. Whatever was in there was going to fall.
But it was, but see, what happened is they were attempting to level the grade to extend their use area, you know, and it was a living viable thing until they got to it. And, look, I'm in favor of, you know, positive development, that's favorable for everybody. But I just think there was a little bit of, you know, while we're at it, let's just continue the grade, and the thing looks like a sheet of ice over there. It's flat as a heck, except for the rear where there's the water retention, and I, I just, I mean, you go in, you measure, you photograph, and then all of a sudden, it's like, we don't like what happened with the rest of them, and now the rest of them come down. So, talk to me, guys. I mean, what is, what is that?
Interesting.
Yeah, well, I don't think arbor buddies are gonna make up a big difference right away. Those trees were at least something there. I'm just putting it out there that I'm sort of not either understanding and/or not happy with how that went down, so.
Okay. And then, maybe just, while you're out there, Mac, can just maybe confirm that they didn't go beyond the scope of work?
Okay.
I don't know if that's your can, but just to make sure.
Okay.
What, anything on that? All right. All right, Blue Wave Solar Oak Street, special permit two-zero-zero-two-zero-three, and SR two-zero-zero-two-zero-three.
Mr. Chair, I recuse myself.
Seenic Roads, that's what the SR is. Gentlemen, welcome to the table again.
Thank you. Hello.
We have Ezra in the audience, too. And Jeff online?
Jeff Murphy, yep.
All right, I know, I know you, but if you can just introduce yourselves for the minutaker.
Greg Morehouse, project manager, Mill Creek Renewables.
Pat Mann, Dave Bates, senior project manager.
Jason Smith, VP of Execution, Blue Wave.
And Jason, who do we have online?
Jeff Murphy, civil engineer.
Okay.
I believe for you guys, we have Corey.
Evening, guys.
Guess I'll turn to Mr. Benoit. What, what should we start off with? I know, we, well, we met, or they met with Concom Monday, and just trying to focus on our stuff.
Things on basin.
Okay.
We should focus on that. We got the response from Fields and Thompson in your package, and, I mean, some of the items that were brought up at the time were the discrepancies of proof plans versus construction plans. We talked about the array layout last meeting, we voted to consider that a minor mod. Right, but some of the other things was, there's new swales shown on the south side of the gravel road leading to Basin Five. That has, I believe, since been installed. It seems like, you know, you guys just did that, right?
That wasn't sold like a while ago, it's been installed for a while.
All right. Site grading at Phase Three areas were both modified. Grading in and around the heavy-use animal, this small area was modified. Planting notes are modified. Agricultural well near infiltration basin five has been moved to the southeast to a new location. Just wanted to see where that was moved to. And that was, that's the old apartment.
I might have it.
You mean, you have it?
No. This is kind of a new plan. So the agricultural well was moved to a location east, southeast to a new location. Just want to see where that was and why it was moved.
I believe the, the location of the revised well is just to the west of like where the D-series wetland is. It appears on the grading drainage and utility plan, sheet C-five-oh-two. I think this layout plan may not show, I'm not sure if that one has the wells turned on or not.
I got one here if you need it.
Would be easier for Jeff to share it, Matt.
Yeah, I can. You want me to share it?
Yeah, we'll make you, so you can share it.
All right, hold on a second, let me just switch up my screens here.
Therefore, you can actually look at it, too, and point at what we want to see.
Yep. Okay. Can everybody see my screen now?
Nope.
Okay. So, let me try to do a little circle out around it, but it's, it's, it's right here. Of course, it does a color, you can't see, but it's, it's right here. It's, um... It's, it's kind of tucked over in this area, just to the kind of south of Basin Five. Like on the plan, north is off to the left, so it's this area. Just the panel layout changed a little bit in that area from the 2020 version. I'll try to open up those plans. Let me just get to the other sheet. This is the 2020 plans. So it was kind of up in this area, closer to the, the sediment basin leading to Basin Five, and then because the panel layout changed in that area, it made more sense to kind of put it over here, so it was more out of the way.
Is that the one and only agricultural well on the site?
Existing or new?
I think, or...
They're all new.
They're all new?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there were a few existing.
There's another one over here, new one.
Yeah, and that one hasn't changed location from that plan to this plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that one.
And the well, and then there's like spigots gonna be out there in different locations fed by the well.
Right.
Yeah, so just the layout updated a bit, you know, with the, the updated panel layout like we talked about before. We just kind of reworked the, the layout of that water line and the spigots to work with where the panels are situated now.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd...
Consider them all minor?
Yeah.
I agree.
What does the board would consider me?
It sounded like they added a completely new one, or just, it was on the plan, it was just moved slightly with the array? Is that, that's what I'm getting at?
Correct.
Through the chair from the last meeting, the array was reduced.
Yes.
Often, you can tell, Al, before, they sort of followed the contour.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we often, the first iteration is how much we could fit, and then we revise that to what makes economic sense for source circuits and stringing.
And things became more efficient on panels.
Correct.
All the time.
Yep.
So, are you looking for, do we need to make a motion and vote, or is that a still?
I think we need a motion to consider those items minor in nature.
Okay, so what, for the well?
Yep. Agricultural well was moved. Planting notes were modified. Grading around the heavy-use animal area was modified. Site grading at Phase Three.
Wow, what are the planting notes that were? Before we vote on, I just want to go over it. Jeff, do you have that maybe, the planting notes?
Yes, I can pull up the planting notes. It's on this sheet, so this is, let me just get to the same thing on both sheets, both plans, so we can compare. So, on the approved plan, it just called out the moment seed, all disturbed areas, including lay-down areas, using the following seed mix, New England Erosion Control Restoration Seed Mix for dry sites, supply of new plantings, ink approved equal. And then for the construction level plans, after working with Blue Wave's agricultural consultant for the dual-use of the project, they had recommended for areas inside the perimeter fence, a special seed mix, this fuzz-and-buzz seed mix supplied by Ernst Conservation Seeds are approved equal. In conjunction with that, the contractor shall install a seasonally appropriate cover crop of annual ryegrass as supplied by Ernst Conservation Seed or orchard grass and clover as approved by owner and engineer. And then all areas outside of the fence, it's still the same approved seed mix.
Okay. Mr. Brodeur, if you could weigh in on how you feel that tracks well with you?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've considered all the changes reviewed so far as minor. I think we did state that. Do you want me to give you an update on the two basin reviews, where the status to twelve?
Well, we'll get to that in a second, I just want to go over these, uh...
Yeah.
These changes first. Just be on standby.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so planting notes, and you said grading?
Grading in the heavy-use area.
Yep.
Oh, you want to talk about grading?
Those areas?
Yeah, Jeffrey, the grading in the animal use area?
Yep. Okay, let me try to do the same thing, a little comparison of the two. So, this was the approved plan set where we had the equipment pad just kind of generically, you know, showing these large rectangles, you know, not having a detailed equipment pad layout. So you can kind of see how this was great. I mean, the heavy-use area is, is similar, but we did make some changes once we got the equipment pad layout. It's generally the same pad, but then we kind of had revised this swale to kind of go around the pad layout, and it still sends things down this way. And then the heavy-use area was pretty much the same, but we did add this little kind of, you know, capture pool to get water under the road. Just, you know, again, was just something that we thought was gonna improve the conveyance of water, you know, down to the Basin Five area. So, that was the change there.
Okay.
That little pool was just a stop, eh?
Yeah, but...
Yeah, we just installed it, too, and I mean, I think Matt had, Matt had saw the issue with it, too, where that, when that wasn't there, the water kind of got right out into the road and ran down the road into the basin versus getting kind of across under the road. So, so we were having some washouts on the side of the road there, and so that was...
So this is capturing?
Yeah, the swale was kind of there, but then it just ran into the road and just was causing issues with the road.
Captures this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Corey, are you fine with the grading plan change?
Yeah, I think it's a, an improvement, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Was there any other?
Swale to basin 5?
Yes, swale shown on the south of the gravel road leading to basin 5.
Swale.
So this is, yeah, so this is the, um, this one we're looking at was the approved plan, which, you know, still had that kind of northerly outer swale shown on it. Um, but then if we switch over to the current construction plans, what we did was we added a swale on the south side of, um, the road to try to catch water coming off the array area and improving its conveyance to the, um, the sediment, uh, forebay area for the basin, um, basin 5. So, that was the change that we, um, had made, and I believe, uh, one of Corey's comments related to basin 5, um, was asking for confirmation, um, that we, that we confirmed that the pipe size under the road is still adequate, now, you know, so now that we're taking a little bit more area into that pipe, that is something that we're, we're running the calculations to confirm if that pipe needs to be upsized. Um, so that's kind of where we're at on that area, item.
Okay.
And that swale's been installed already. That's okay.
So we can't, until we know, when I'm just saying, know that the pipe size is good? Probably can't?
I mean...
Well, we, vote on the swale probably, but...
Right. Yeah, we can vote on the swale.
Yeah.
But as far as the pipe...
Yeah, we should, we'll just have to confirm it first.
Right.
Through the chair, are we trying to assess whether these items that you've been taking in note, Mr. Benoit has, is considered a minor modification?
Right.
Is that what we're trying to capture and vote on?
These items are all stormwater related.
Yeah, yeah.
Our condition allows us to, at the Afghans' expense, make changes to the stormwater system provided it's settling from the site, which it was. So, these, these are consistent with our decision, and we can consider these minor in nature for the recommendation of our period.
Do we have the items?
Yeah, just later on.
Can we make, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Is it allowed yet? Go ahead.
I'm trying to go over, I'm trying to do one.
I just want to ask one thing, if it is that the, these are considered to be minor, can we just, can we approve at least the pipe conditionally, say it's minor, it just needs to be verified and validated by your third-party engineer? I believe so.
Okay, I don't know, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know if the size would make it major or minor, it just needs to be validated by you guys.
And execute.
Correct.
Right, it needs...
Exactly. The only other thing was the site grading in Phase 3 was modified.
Grading, and where?
Site, Phase 3.
Phase 3.
Generally, out of one of these.
Sorry, which one was this?
Site gr...
Phase 3 site grading?
This was item 12C.
Yeah, I think it's the grading kind of, is it just below the heavy use area, that little straightening of that slope there?
I thought we just went over that one.
Okay, I apologize. Yeah, I guess that it kind of is the same thing.
Okay.
Hold those two together.
Yeah, the heavy use area and the, the little plunge pool.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, that's part of being a creator. Yeah, so those are the items, so we already voted on the array layout modification.
Yeah.
So the new swale shown on the south of gravel road leading to basin 5, um, the grading around the heavy use animal area, planting notes, and the agricultural well.
And the stormwater pipe.
And the stormwater pipe.
Assessment from the swale.
From the swale.
So, if, uh...
What have you said?
Yeah, we heard the discussion, and if the board feels that they're minor changes in support of them?
Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion, but I also like to make a statement that continue to be vigilant for all of us, you know, yourselves and us. This is important to all parties involved, okay, so I said that. In that light, I'd like to make a motion that we consider this to be minor modifications as presented and as notes taken by Mr. Benoit, who will come up with the list. Um, and, and that's my, my take is that I consider it minor modifications in support of this project.
Second.
Okay, which may be Mr. Solkra, second may be Mr. Preston, the confusion with, Arnie's name's still there. Um, any further discussion? Seeing as none, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstained? Alright.
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
Um, I would just ask that going forward, if there are modifications that the engineers are, need to show us, can we have before and after snapshots in our packages so that it makes it easier to determine what it is we're looking at?
Sure. And if I may add, so there's flesh, but, uh, can we try to get some graphics in there? So, I know the engineer is on the fly trying to zoom through all these different, but like an overlay, maybe green is new and black is old, or red, new, so something we can see graphically.
Yeah, like a clouded, clouded revision.
But I'd like to see that. Whatever. Sorry.
No, it's, it's very difficult.
Mr. Benoit, any other, uh...
I just want to make one, one comment, absolutely will do that. We've not made any modifications from, since the building permit was issued. So these drawings represent what went to the building permit, and we were permitted with these, these, these drawings.
Understandable, but what you proposed, like the pad area?
Correct.
That you, I mean, at the end, he was able to get the two within two snapshots.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But it would be cool to see it with some sort of color overlay so we could see its juxtaposition.
Yep.
In reference to itself, and I think that's a good assessment that we can use.
Absolutely will.
Good to him, thank you.
Um, do you guys fly drones and take pictures regularly?
We do.
Maybe next week, just a little overshot of how it's looking, I know it's been a little while since some people...
Actually, I'll be sharing in a moment.
Okay, yeah, just, it'd be good for the whole board to kind of see an overall picture of what it looks like.
You can just do a time also, right? What it looked like over time.
Yeah.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, so my construction manager usually, every week, every other week, he'll go fly the whole site, get probably 10, 15 photos. So I could even kind of put together a package from December when this all started to now , which everyone's referenced.
Yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
I have a question if you could.
Yes.
So, obviously, this is a work in progress, and we appreciate what you've done. Um, I'd like to ask, all things considered, what would be your estimate in terms of having all your surface water controls constructed, functional? What is your plan? What is your schedule at this point?
All...
How, how do you see playing out in terms of schedule?
Um, we would, we would love to be able to provide, can you hear me? We would love to be able to provide that schedule. Right now, we are limited in what we can do.
I'm talking about an estimate, not a detailed schedule, but the end game, when all the surface waters, uh, controls are constructed and functional and completed.
So, right now, we are, uh, we have basin 1, 2, and 5 built to grade, uh, and we have a couple minor issues, but not, not minor issues, but minor items that are installed. So basin 2, pretty much everything's installed, other than the final loam that would be done after everything. Basin 5, we've got the oil control structure and the WIC drain through the berm. We're going through a couple of questions on the WIC drain elevation that we're waiting on, but basically, in, in general, those are as constructed as we need them to be right now to control the stormmars on the site. Basins 3 and 4, we are not allowed, we just got an order from the Concom in the last meeting that we're not allowed to move forward to those. So, right now, we're, we're complete with the basins we have. There's some, still some work to be done in basin 1, some remediation work, where we've got to repair the clay core in a spot or two, but in general, the, the form of the basin is there, and, uh, so...
Six weeks to get 3 and 4 weeks?
Yeah, and I, we're conservative, would be like 6 to 8 weeks maximum on basin 3 and 4 if we were able to go, you know? If the weather's like this, you know...
So conditionally stated?
Yeah.
That's what I was getting at.
Alright, thank you.
That range completely depends on when you can start breaking, well, not really breaking ground, but moving, moving forward.
I think it would say, once we were permitted to, it would be 6 to 8 weeks after that, save it be weather.
And that's conservative, I think, if, if it was good weather like this, you know, yeah.
So you qualified it, but I appreciate that.
Well, I went with the higher one, normally I'd say the lower one, well, depends on who's pushing me.
Thank you.
Do we have any other items for Corey, or?
Uh, not for basin 5. I mean, if you want, you can kind of...
Can we show the video, I mean, the photo?
Yeah, just so if you guys can get an idea of what it's looking like now, it would be helpful maybe to show the drone photos.
Yeah.
How's the cleanup going on Mazinski?
Slow, but it's going. It's going to take longer than we anticipated, but the, the weather is now helping.
Yeah, yeah, it's been slower than we, we knew it was going to be difficult, it's been pretty slow, but we're inching forward.
So, I'm just pulling up a snippet of the, what was this, SWIP report that you guys had. This kind of shows some of the items that were at least of concern. I mean, one of the things we talked about here, that, that's, that's, this is, there's some pictures there, but, I mean, we, we had a runoff issue coming here, but it was breaching over a silt fence, it looks like that was rectified, uh, just recently on the sidewalk, so I was pretty pleased with that. 7 and 8 are outside of our jurisdictions, so we can admit to that. But these issues seem to be resolved, at least mitigated at this time. Um, I'll go down to...
Kind of represents all the new settling basins, all that fun stuff that we've installed.
Right.
Temporarily.
This is tough. Talking about the entrance. So, one of the things that's come up is there's some weeping coming out of basin 5, right? It's coming out of the base of basin 5. And I believe, in, in talking with them today, they're talking about drawing this down, or at least pumping this out so they can install a clay liner in here to prevent that from weeping in the future, because it's coming over onto this property here and kind of making this way. And that's our only real point of, of discharge at this time. Um, everything else seems to be controlled pretty well. Um, the entrance way here had some, um, I, I suggested just kind of washing the stones just because they were still kind of silting and all sorts of things there, but, uh, it might be contributing to the road, but it might not be. It's, it's really hard to tell. But I wanted to share some pictures from the sidewalk today, if we could.
Can I just remark about number 1 and 24 really fast?
Yeah.
So, so number 1, we've known for a long time that it's been weeping, and the weather did permit us to get in and fix it, and so the weather is now ready for us to fix it. However, we have received the review of basin 1 from Haley Ward, and there are some recommendations also that we have made with a request that we had already provided about a design point for runoff at the construction entrance, and we're waiting for that to be returned. What we want to do is, the construction of the recommendations that we seem to be, believe to be minor for basin 1, to do that at the same time as fixing the core and the weep. But we're, we're, the weep is, we've been aware of that. And I would say also at 24, if you drive into the site, and I'm certain you guys have been there, you drive in and the way that we built these, these additional basins is when you drive in and you come over the little top, the only amount of water that can exit the site at that street at the moment, from that road, is just that tracking pad as you enter. And we did look at it today, that it has been, it does need some cleaning.
Yeah.
But as far as what water is pooling turbidity or not on that road, we think it's just washing off of what might come off of, of some vehicles in the track pad at the entrance, and that's it. It's not exiting from other parts of the site, is my point, onto Oak.
So, but one thing, uh, on the, um, proposed design with Haley Ward's review was that there was a, a catch basin proposed with a pipe that went under the driveway and daylighted into the swale. This board would not have any jurisdiction over that, that would have to be presented in front of roadway commissioners before a selection. They would, they would have to, to, so that's a matter for them.
No worries.
I just need to make that a point on the record, so...
May I ask a question? May I ask a question, though? Is, the, near the, the track pad there, is the water table such that you can install a beehive and put some drainage perforated with fabric on top that goes into, is it, can you recharge it, or is it just all saturated there all the time?
Definitely over, over the winter, it was saturated, you know, with the, with the amount of water and rainwater we had this winter, it just, anywhere we dug into down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just couldn't get any recharge down there.
So you can't depend on?
No.
You know, people recharge, put something in the yard, and it goes away?
And it does, it does flow down, but it just goes, the issue, part of the issue is, is, you know, some of the tracking, but then as it leaves our site, it runs along the side of the road, and it's just kind of a dirt shoulder there, and it just kind of all mixes in, and, you know, it's not the best on the edge of the road there, though.
Does that go into, when we spoke of the last meeting, that the rip route and that sort of gully that's along, and then it goes down, and...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, that's where you're trying to get it to go to.
Yes. Well, my answer would be that the water coming off the site originally was already headed down there.
Yeah.
Now that it's, we've stabilized where the water's coming off...
And all you're talking about is the track pad.
That's it.
Alright, well, there, good sequence.
Yeah.
So, just want to show some pictures from the sidewalk today. This is, um, this is smallest of the part of the walk, this is a drone shot, but, uh, this shows kind of the height.
Share.
Sharon, right?
Thank you. A different screen.
Oh, oh, fun. Let's, uh, share.
That's a lot of water.
That's not us, but...
I keep seeing that, I'm like, that's a lot of water.
So here's a drone shot showing the seeding that was done, and I guess this is the entrance over here.
Yeah.
Coming up, and this is kind of the upgrading areas that were seeded to prevent silt runoff from entering the basins. Um, let's see if this...
And, yeah, these pictures were big progress of seeding, so that's all covered now.
So the problem, the outlet, I mean, where it broke through, is down the bottom left?
Yeah, right.
Manchog?
Right at the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, now I know.
Bottom middle, yeah.
So the, the silt fence, the way that the water wants to come off, it hits the silt fence, and since the silt fence on our property line doesn't run contour, it just hits that silt fence and goes to fines.
It's okay, I just want orientation.
Yeah.
I've been on the site.
Right in the middle is probably where that is.
Okay, so, it's not going to let me go with photo to photo, so, we have to kind of open them up to the time.
This is going better than Sutton.
Meaning it's not over, knock on wood, please.
Last week after.
We had never experienced something like that.
You mean, the video part?
Yeah, the video part.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tune in, in.
Let's share my screen.
There we go. It's up there.
So this is the back of basin 5.
Mm-hmm. With a VAC truck.
Right. Yep. Right. Shows the oil control structure right here.
When was that? Because that seems...
Recent.
Oh, yeah, that oil control structure was not installed last time we spoke.
This, this photo's from maybe 2, 2 or 3 days ago, 2 days ago.
I figured it'd seem more buttoned on the trees.
So, this was that, this is that, uh...
The pipe.
That little, uh, area near the, the heavy animal area.
Okay.
Pipe and a little settling area that goes on the road. That's the same issue. Goes towards basin 5. This is kind of an example of some of the, the seeding, or, uh, sorry, the, um...
Erosion from that.
Oil control blankets, and this is on the back of basin 5, where there's still some, Control blankets, and this is on the back of basin five where there's still some, some weeping coming up there on basin five. Talked to Wes from Haley Ward about that today. Kind of what his comments were, but who cares?
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Something we're going to monitor.
Yeah, so we talked at the Haley Ward site, he went on the sidewalk. We've talked about it a few times, whether it's, we're going to excavate that area out and just investigate where we think that water's coming from at the bottom of five there.
Very unlikely to be coming as a weeping, we'd expect to see that higher as a weep. So it's probably likely groundwater, but we're going to do some investigating.
And it's also consistent, the bay, the basin has no water in it, but it's still weeping. So it's more of a thought that, yep, that it's groundwater, the additional pressure of the berm is pressing down and there's, it's finding a way out. Exactly. So in, in the event that there was water in this, it would lead us to believe that there's a possible weeping, but there, there was no water and so there's no reason it should be.
Does the weeping create a volume or is the weeping just wet?
Just wet.
That one's just wet, yeah. In basin one.
But it's wet on adjacent property?
No, 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 it doesn't leave.
Eventually, this makes its way into, at least onto the roadway swale and makes its way into the basin.
So you couldn't line it with some sort of EPDM or sort of, you know, pool liner, you know, like a fish liner and try to, whatever, the size of the engine is.
Can you bring up the, the aerial again?
And we have noticed in other parts that where there's not ponds too, like if you look on that photo on the side of the road, just, it's a wet site, we all know that area, yeah, there's, there's water coming out in some spots.
And so it runs down and then it runs into one of the rip route?
Yeah.
Little, little basins beyond it, yeah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it doesn't stream. It just is wet.
Yeah.
But you can kind of see out here too, this is no basin and it's still, it's the same kind of, just the junction of the slopes where it goes from deeper to less deep.
Is that a rip route?
That's it there.
The bottom of that one. The upper slope, yeah.
So it's percolating through?
Well, we don't know if it's percolating through, but that's what the point I was making is there's no water in the basin. So if there was water in the basin, we would anticipate it filtrating and burping out. But since there's no water, we believe it's just groundwater, hydrostatic, water coming out and weeping. And so, but like Pat said, he's going to, we're going to watch it, do a little bit of discovery without damaging the berm and then we'll report back.
Anything else you want to go over, Mr. Benoit?
This was the new Russian control blankets put on the site for a request. This was, I guess, with Wes, I guess, the site, up the tail end of basin five, this heading towards face.
Okay.
And this was, this was done very well. This is the, this is where the water was coming, at least channeled on the south side of the property towards the controls property. It was very dry, so I just took a picture of that. And the temporary basin was not overflowing at the time, so this is a picture of that. These are still a little pool of water, but they are temporary holding basin water. This is the new area where all the rocks were. There was a ton of rocks there that were just moved out.
Yeah.
Now loam this and there's going to be more Russian control blankets placed on that. They also staked out the, the trees. There's some plantings on the plant that are kind of staked out in the middle. Tracking that was done. That's going to be stabilized soon.
Yeah, they're working on, they were, they started before I left today. They were, they were working on that.
Is that hole number four? Is that golf course?
I know, yeah. God, they're great.
So this is the, this is the hill off of basin two. I kind of took a close up. There is grass coming out.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's kind of tough to see, but it's tough to see when you take the picture like that and get it in close, you see some of the grass that's coming up, so that's a good sign.
Is that mesh, is it biodegradable or do you have to remove that?
It's photodegradable, so it stays there? You know, the, the sun will break it down.
Okay, oh, that's cool.
We do have some, the, the first picture you showed was the biodegradable, Matt.
Right. And what is the other material that the sticks in?
Straw.
That's straw. Close up.
That's if there's an ant to see if some relative size.
Yeah.
So I think the stabilization efforts are definitely there.
Yeah.
They've done a good job with that. Definitely committed for that.
That's cool.
I wish we started with the photos. You're very busy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're just kind of waiting on the response from Haley Ward's review of basin one.
Okay.
And so that's, that should be, I believe, available for our next meeting.
Three and four have to be released by conservation.
Yes, correct.
Yep.
When do you meet with them next?
Either the 20th or the 13th there. I'll try to figure out when they can squeeze us in.
Thank you.
Well, we will meet in between again and hopefully be able to address the items in the peer review at that time. And that'd be the last of the remaining items for, for basin one to.
Anything you guys would like to add?
Nope.
Board, any questions, any more questions? It's pretty early in the night. Is anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Phyllis, I think you're the only one on. Do you have anything? Give her a second.
No questions, thank you.
All right, Phyllis, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you doing a couple of weeks. And good luck. Enjoy the weather.
Thanks Cory, appreciate it.
All right.
Chairman, I'm back.
Welcome back, Mrs. Wicker. Any other ongoing development updates?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Do you have any staff or administrative updates, Matt?
Nope.
Okay.
How did we leave that with them? Are they coming back in two weeks?
Yeah.
It was hard to tell.
They are.
Yeah, I think any meeting we have, they'll be here for a while. All right. Minutes, anyone have a chance to look at them?
Yes, actually.
May give me some comments on these, I will share.
I did see one thing, Mr. Chairman, on the 14th, exactly missed the absent, most after the, those attendants, unless I missed it somewhere.
Yeah. It was all would be.
Comments on the 14th?
I did.
All would be, would be Mr. Marx, I believe.
So you're going to make a motion?
I just noticed something at the very beginning. I don't know if you have anything else to add on that.
So I have Max comments up on the board. Should add the word, rest of the plans provided to the board here.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Hold on, Mike. Yeah, we're going over the, uh, couple of them.
19 depots, no butter, property feels changed, parking area approaching too close, edited O to the word two. It's completed and is in satisfactory, the town here. This is great, Mike, thank you for the use. Formatting, it's a comma here. There's another comma here. Being the garage will need to be constructed before the apartment is occupied. That's accurate. What ones are getting ready to administer and are getting ready to administer the restoration plan, cannot start, it's a tilt, but it should be until, excuse me, prove it, obminary with a comma, well, he's the economic development director, so update that. Does not get my job just yet.
Not yet, right?
Which one do you have up there right now?
14th.
February 14th. I have one on the 14th.
Development of a solution there.
Yeah, I do too, but I don't know what's going on over there.
Yeah. Little handful of grammatical changes here, pretty solid, so we'll see what else that anyone else has. What do you got?
I'm not sure what you were doing over there, but I was going to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as modified for February 14th. I got a change though.
What do you got?
One more change.
Right here. There's supposed to be a space in between that.
Oh, her name, Durozario.
Should be one, should be one continuous.
Yep, you got it, okay.
And then, Mr. Benoit, for Mr. Marx absent.
Yep. I got one.
Oh. I'll allow it. What do you got?
Since it is official public record, my last name is spelled with a lowercase r.
You got it. Okay.
Ready for that motion?
Yes. I think. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 14th as modified. That's it, that's the motion. Second that.
Which may be Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Okay, February 14th are all set.
About the other one? So you don't have to look so much.
Okay, got it.
Okay. I don't know if I missed any or not. I got one, two, three, four, five times.
Got it. Which one yours?
The 28th.
28th, yeah. Okay.
Does that look right, Matt?
Yep.
I think I see five.
Yep, I got, I got six.
You found another one?
Yeah. Looks good. Handful of other amendments. Page.
Might we have a last name on the Susan W. or is it just Susan W.?
Where is that?
Same, same paragraph in the beginning.
Oh, her name was very hard to pronounce. Yeah, we'll take.
Should it be just W. Fine?
W. Is okay.
Okay, I didn't know.
We could, yeah.
I didn't know the protocol on that.
Good point. We can add her last name, that'll be.
I think her address is on there too, so we can easily try to find her.
Right.
No, this isn't W. Of 19 depot street.
Yeah.
The W., where was it, W.?
Okay.
Right here. Mylar. So what you're talking about? No.
They were doing, they were planning on finishing over the next couple of weeks, said it done. They're done. Okay. Change here and grammatical. Good. Great at the bottom of the base, that's good. Very good.
Good?
Yep.
All right. Was there any update, were there any changes? Yes, there were.
Yep.
So look to Mr. Greco. For February 20th, do you have anything?
They should probably make it.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 28th as amended.
May be Mrs. Wicker?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? February 28th, all set. We just have to sign some ANRs.
Yep.
And to be signed going around as well, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
May be Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.